Dr. Bree Brandon.
Ms. Homage, I'm here. I just couldn't get off unmute quick enough.
No worries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Homage, members of the school board. Good, good afternoon. Happy Tuesday, everybody, and it's really a great joy to see all of you today and to bring to you and to our community. Our returning strong, our work session here for April around returning to school. For the spring, the summer, and for the fall. So I look forward to discussing with you today. Our plan to return students to five days of in-person learning this fall. As you know, this spring, our schools have been using updated CDC guidance. That we received a few weeks ago to expand in-person learning to four days. And I want to thank our principals and teachers. Who have done just outstanding work. To the greatest degree possible to expand learning for four days, based on the staffing and space capacity of schools. While continuing to adhere to CDC guidance, they really deserve a big thank you for all of their work and effort. I want you to know too that our transmission in schools for COVID-19 remains minimal. With only 0.03% of our in-person staff and students reporting COVID positive as a result of school transmission. We truly have done a job to expand more opportunities for students and to return them safely in person. Our schools are a safe place, a safe place for learning, and I am thankful for our students, staff, and our families. As they have joined us in returning to in-person instruction. Of course, we look forward not just to expanding those opportunities here in April for this spring, but really welcoming back. Asking everyone to come back home to FCPS schools for five days of in-person learning this fall. And I'm so excited to share with you our plan and approach to do just that today. Before we dive though into the day's agenda, I do want to take a moment to share with you some scenes around our division this quarter. That really accentuate the joy and the hard work of our students, staff, and families.
Is there an audio issued, Dr. Bree Brandon? Is there supposed to be audio? For whoever is sharing, there is an option that you have to enable to allow audio to be heard when you share.
Yeah, I think our, our school board office is working through that so we can let you see the audio. We'll. Take a quick pause and try that again so you can hear and see. That information.
Back to Blackboard, I guess.
Oh, Mr. Fresh.
No. No way. You had to get that in there, Mr. Fresh, didn't you?
Outdoor learning is something that is very new in a lot of our buildings and it just makes teaching so wonderful.
Well, it was great to see the excitement of our students and staff as they're returning in school and having a wonderful time. And we know there's more joy and excitement underway as we expand those opportunities for kids now and really plan for all. Of our kids to return in person in the fall. I want to go over our outline of our presentation. For you right now this afternoon, since we last met to provide the board with an update on the work session. As you know, there have been significant changes in CDC guidance, and we've been working in collaboration with our local and state. Health department to actualize those changes. So we'll be talking a bit about that. We'll also discuss fourth quarter and the expansion of in-person learning. And we'll talk about our updates to summer learning programs. We're really anticipating serving over 35,000 students and we're actively recruiting and incentivizing. Our teachers to teach this summer. We know we've asked a lot of them this year, and this is one more. Asked to ask them to come back and really help our students finish some of the unfinished learning for them for this year. We're also busy and we'll be sharing with you today our approach for school year 21, 22. And we'll talk about that approach again to five days in person. Learning, our approach to virtual learning, which will be limited. And the work we're doing now to ensure that our students, staff, families, and schools are ready. To welcome back all of our students to five days of in-person instruction. But first on this presentation is health and safety, and I want to turn it over to our wonderful leadership team member. Dr. Boyd, who's going to go over health and safety updates. Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Dr. Bree Brandon, and good afternoon, school board members, community, and esteemed colleagues. On March 19th, the CDC released updated operational guidance for schools. That included a number of updates to include a change in the minimum physical distancing requirements. Between students from six feet to three feet when universal masking is in place at most transmission levels. As outlined in the table displayed here, three feet of physical distancing can be implemented. At the elementary level at all levels of community transmission, low, moderate, substantial, and high. When universal masking is implemented. Recommendations for physical distancing for middle and high schools include a minimum of three feet between students. When masks are worn during low, moderate, and substantial transmission at three feet. And high community transmission with mask if cohorting can be implemented. Or six feet at high community transmission if cohorting cannot be implemented, as is in the case of our FCPS middle and high schools. In all levels of community transmission, physical distancing between adults and adults to students remain six feet. On April 7th, 2021, Fairfax Community Transmission decreased to substantial community transmission. Which resulted in FCPS middle and high schools shifting to a minimum of three feet physical distancing between students and classrooms. This past week, community transmission in Fairfax County increased, resulting in transmission in the high category. Given the commitment to provide stability for students and families. FCPS in collaboration with the Fairfax County Health Department. Developed an algorithm to guide physical distancing in middle and high schools using local context. Which will be described in detail later in this presentation. As we move to our next slide, in addition to the change in physical distancing recommendations. By school level and community transmission levels, the updated CDC guidance provided other key updates for schools. Those updates include a change from 14-day to a seven-day average for use of community transmission data. Reducing the number of risk levels from five levels to four levels. It added the importance of isolation and quarantine to our mitigation strategies. Again, we include the importance of students and staff. If they're identified as close contacts and directed to quarantine. That we need them to not engage in those in-person activities and to follow the guidance from health officials. And if they're identified as being COVID positive and are directed to isolate. We also need them to follow that guidance and not engage in in-person activities until they're cleared by those health officials. We also have consistently referred to our strategies as key mitigation strategies. And an update in this guidance changes the phrase from key mitigation strategies to layered prevention strategies. And some might say that that's just a change in words, but the context is important as well. We don't want to just look at any one strategy in isolation. The more we apply layers of our strategies. The more protection we provide for ourselves and our community. The recommendations also included updated information about both diagnostic and screening testing. And those updated guidance provided recommendations for community, for schools, excuse me, back community transmission levels. Naturally, we've had some information included, as you saw on the previous screen, that provided some recommendations for sports. Given consideration of whether sports were going to be held indoors or outdoors and the ability to. Implement physical distancing within those sports. And last but not least was the emphasis on the change and recommendations for the minimum physical distancing that we discussed on the previous slide. As we move forward, we shared that, that maintaining stability for our students and families. Was going to be incredibly important during our fluctuating community transmission. While recommendations for physical distancing are constant across transmission levels for our elementary schools. The change in recommendation for middle and high schools when there is high community transmission. Could adversely impact our ability to provide continuity of four days of in-person instruction for students. More specifically, if FCPS were to change the minimal physical distancing levels each time community transmission changed. There could be middle and high school students that would have a different number of in-person days. From week to week with the weekly release of community transmission data that is shared by the Virginia Department of Health weekly on Wednesdays. As a result, FCPS in collaboration with the Fairfax County Health Department. Developed an algorithm to determine if and when physical distancing requirements would change at the middle and high school level. You'll notice that if community transmission increases to high, middle and high schools would only revert back to six feet physical distancing. If the particular school had more than two outbreaks within 14 days. Or if a school's outbreak in a school was not small. And the size of the outbreak, as noted, is determined by the health department. It's important to note that decisions regarding the minimum level of physical distancing. Three feet or six feet for each middle and high school during high community transmission would be made by the superintendent or his designee. And will be based on each individual school's data unless many FCPS middle and high schools. Experienced school outbreaks within a 14-day period and the health department recommends adjustments to mitigation, including physical distancing. In summary, disease in the community and disease in schools will be considered together to inform decision around mitigation. It's important to note that based on our data thus far, none of our schools have met the two factors outlined on this algorithm. FCPS will continue to consult and collaborate with the Fairfax County Health Department. Our local partners in turn, those persons engage in collaboration with health experts at the state and federal levels. BDH and the CDC respectively. As shared previously, and you'll see on our next slide, as shared previously, diagnostic and screening testing is an element that is included in the updated operational strategy for schools. The BDH, in an effort to support schools in implementing the recommended testing. Has launched two voluntary pilot programs for schools, a diagnostic testing program and a screening testing program. The purposes of diagnostic testing is to identify those persons, students or staff who are symptomatic. For those persons who have been identified through the contact tracing and contact investigation and process as close contacts. While screening testing is meant to identify infected people who do not have symptoms. And to be able to identify those persons as soon as possible. The BDH screening prop, excuse me, screening pilot includes a couple of things. Schools may elect to participate in either or both pilot programs. The BDH will provide the testing materials free to schools and will also provide additional support. And schools can receive their materials and begin participating as early as mid-April and the pilot will run through June 30th of 2021. Schools engaging in the pilot will be required to commit to a minimum of four weeks of testing. FCPS will participate in the BDH testing pilot and is in a process of working with schools. That elect to voluntarily participate in one or both pilot programs. We will be conducting a testing program overview for schools that have expressed interest on this week. We will provide an update to the board and the community on the implementation of the pilot during our next return to school presentation. Finally, on our next slide, we want to provide you with an update that we're extremely excited that COVID vaccinations. For our 16 and 18-year-olds became available on April 18th. We are encouraging all of our students to engage and to take advantage of those vaccination opportunities. We're also, in addition to the. Community-wide registration process, we are also in the process of exploring partnership options. To try and stand up a very intentional clinic for our students this summer. To support the number of students that will be vaccinated, which would really bolster our ability to return strong. For five days of in-person instruction on our upcoming school year. It finally, it's important to note that at this time, COVID testing is not included as a school entrance requirement. Should any of that information change, we would be, make sure that we would timely notify both the board and our community of any updates. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Lisa Williams, our chief equity officer for updates on the fourth quarter. Dr. Williams?
Thanks, Dr. Boyd. So first, let's take a look at FCPS by numbers. It's important for us to reiterate that less than 1% of transmissions that have transpired have happened in schools. So we're able to keep students safe in classrooms, students and staff. 100% of students will have the opportunity to participate in in-person graduation. Congratulations graduates. And there are 50 classrooms where there is an outdoor environment that is provided for our young people. So what does that mean in terms of moving forward? Next slide, please. While there are many things that we have learned through the course, over the course of this year. We have to pay attention to the vulnerabilities that the data would suggest. Still are very much situated and present in our context. And that is typified by the data that is before you. So what you'll see if we take a look at academic data specifically around second quarter marks, if we look at those data. Through the lens of both race and ethnicity and participation in special program. Is that they are disproportionality that are not different, remarkably different than those that existed prior to the pandemic. We see our black students and Hispanic students disproportionately represented among students getting Ds and Fs. As accord, in accordance to data reported for quarter two. Similarly, our FRM students, our students who are emergent bilingual. Our students with disabilities are displaying similar patterns, similar patterns in achievement. And so it's critically important as we think about returning strong that we keep our eye on the challenges related to equitable access. And high academic outcomes for all learners. To that end, next slide, please. Our MTSS model is designed for the type of responsiveness that allows us to react to these kinds of data patterns that are demonstrated in the, in the. Evidence. Specifically, the MTSS process is used to help us to know and serve students who demonstrate the greatest need. Those who demonstrate patterns that suggest that on-time graduation might be compromised. Those that are not achieving standards at grade level expectations. And students who might be having challenges with social or emotional needs. Similarly, we have made available for person, four-day instruction to students whose families have them signed up for two-day. Two-day instruction at present, because again, the optimal condition is to ensure that all students have access to in-person. Quality teaching and learning. And so of course, our MTSS model is a part of how that process gets facilitated. Additionally, the transition process, as we think about increasing access to in-person, will look different from campus to campus. A hallmark of equitable access because there are different variables with which each school community might be contending to include items like. Occupancy, class size, spacing, spacing arrangements, et cetera. And the central office team works on problem solving with schools to ensure that maximum opportunities are made available. Lastly, there will be no schedule changes made after April, so it's very important that our community be made aware. And Dr. Presidio will take us into our next portion of the discussion, which is thinking about expansion of summer learning opportunities.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. And as we make this transition into thinking about summer, I just want to. Reiterate what Dr. Williams mentioned about, we know that there's a lot of continuing support that we're going to provide during fourth quarter to our students. But we do know that there are a number of students still who do have unfinished learning. That are going to need additional support services during the summer. And we're preparing very comprehensive programs and supports for students this summer. So just a few highlights of things that are represented on this slide. You know, first, we're very excited to be able to offer our summer learning programs in person. So you know, those students that have really struggled in a virtual learning environment are going to be able to work with teachers in person in very small class sizes. During our summer programs. We're also excited that we're going to offer our programs in all of our schools. So as much as possible, students will be grouped with students from their schools and served by teachers from their schools as well. So that just keeps that. School community intact as we think about summer programming. As we've mentioned before, this is going to be a very large program with a large budget. We're spending over $35 million of federal. Grant funds through the CARES and ESER funds that we've received to support this extended learning time during the summer. We do anticipate over 35,000 students participating. And that represents a 10-time or a tenfold increase over our regular. Summer program offerings that we've offered under normal operating conditions in previous years. For example, high school credit recovery program opportunities are going to be doubled. So students will have twice as many opportunities to earn twice as many credits. At the high school level this year. And also, for the first time that I'm aware of, at least in my nine years in the school system, we're going to be providing. Free enrichment courses to students in career and technical education courses and in the fine arts. And as Dr. Brabran mentioned earlier, we know how hard our staff have worked, both our instructional staff and our non-instructional support staff all year. So as we're asking folks to continue to support our students during the summer. You know, there's going to be obviously additional summer compensation to work during the summer, but there will also be additional stipends on top of the normal compensation rate. That we've previously provided, both again to instructional staff members. As well as non-instructional staff members, so bus drivers, clerical, food service workers, for example. In a, in a hope to be able to recognize and incentivize their participation in summer learning. So I've got a number of slides here. That provide many more details about the different summer programs. I will go through them pretty quickly in the interest of time, but the first slide. Represents our elementary and middle school programs that really are new this year. So we're going to be offering bridge to kindergarten in all of our schools again this year. We've done that in a limited fashion in the past. But we'll be able to offer bridge to kindergarten to any of our students who had. Either no preschool experience or very little preschool experience this year. As well as any student who participated only in a virtual preschool experience this year. And for the first time ever, we're introducing a bridge to first grade program modeled on our bridge to kindergarten program. Again, to make sure that students at those primary grade levels really have the literacy, the mass supports, as well as the. School routine and self-regulation and school skills to be successful. So. A bridge to first grade will be offered for the first time. And for the first time as well, we will offer our young scholars program across the school division. To any of our students who have been identified as young scholars in, in FCPS. So that's really exciting about the elementary and the middle school level. On each of these slides, you'll see a couple of other details that I want to point out. You'll see the chart on the right, which is the timeline for program implementation. And I think the biggest thing that I would highlight on these charts are the program dates. And so for example, here you see this program's going to run from the middle through the end of July. As well as the dates when we will be inviting students. And we've received a lot of questions from families about. You know, how will I know if my students have been selected to participate in summer programs? And the schools will be reaching out directly to families that we're identifying. As being candidates to participate in the summer extended learning programs. So that window is broad. You can see in some cases, we've already begun to make those invitations. But we will extend that invitation period through the month of May. Because in many cases, how students perform during fourth quarter will determine whether or not. They might need to have some of these additional summer learning opportunities. So the schools will directly contact families if their students are eligible to participate in the summer programs. Go to the next slide. Similarly, at the high school program, as I mentioned, students can now take two courses during the summer program. So students again. Where they might have failed a course or chosen a no mark on their transcript, which the board approved in our last work session. To give some additional flexibility for students on their transcripts if they weren't doing well at the end of the school year. Those students would have an opportunity to continue to attend during the summer and earn the passing grade in that course. So similarly, you see the student registration dates as well as the program dates on this slide. And we'll be, teachers as well as school staff will be working directly with students. Who are failing or selecting no marks in their courses to get them registered for summer programs. Go to the next slide. And then special education, as we've discussed before, will continue to have our extended school year program. But this year, we're also offering a very comprehensive recovery services program. And this is for students, special education students and/or related service students. With disabilities to be able to get additional support to address their learning needs or any possible regression that might have happened. During the school closure period when they were participating in virtual learning. That program recovery period, you can see again in the chart, is going to run through June into August. So there's an extensive window of time there. The amount of time that individual students might need to participate may vary. But we have a very significant amount of time during the summer to provide those recovery services. As well as the extended school year and preschool autism program as we've done in previous years. Next slide. And then I also wanted to point out that we're having a lot of comprehensive supports and services built in for our English language learners. Dr. Williams again showed that grade slide as one data point where we see our English learners are really. Students who've had some of the most difficulty in the virtual learning environment this year. So there's going to be comprehensive supports built into our elementary, middle, and high school programs for English language learners. ESOL staff will be available to work with general classroom teachers to support students. As well as to provide direct English language development support services to our English language learners. Also, at the elementary and middle level, all of our level one students. Or students with limited or interrupted formal education will be automatically invited to enroll and participate in our summer program. And at the high school level, we'll be automatically looking at providing services to students who might be at level one or level two. Or who might have a numeracy and literacy gaps and some very explicit supplemental programming. Around literacy and numeracy essentials in addition to the credit recovery services that will be available to students. And again, all students will have the option to get additional ESOL supports in their base schools. Next slide. And then our enrichment programs, as I mentioned, we're very excited for the first time ever this year to be able to provide. Free tuition for students who qualify for free and reduced meal status. So. Uh, free tuition uh, for students who qualify for free and reduced meal status. So. Uh, our elementary arts programs and our secondary arts programs, as well as our CTE programs like Tech Adventure Camp and our summer. Uh, CTE Summer Academy Program uh, will be free of charge for those students who qualify. On FRM status. So we're very excited about that. And you can see the tuition for some of these programs. Um, is quite expensive because this is a self-sustaining program. Um, so it's, it's obviously a not-for-profit program, but to get the teachers as well as the supplies and the materials available. Uh, oftentimes is cost prohibitive. So uh, we're excited about these free registration opportunities this year. Next slide, please. And then when we look at all of these programs in totality. Uh, you can see that there's a significant number of teachers across the division uh, that will be uh, providing supports to students. As well as uh, a significant number of students, over thirty-five thousand students who will be participating in one or more of these services. So we do know um. That there's a lot of work that we need to do to hire and to incentivize the hiring process. Again, it's not just teachers that uh, we need to hire, but it's the support staff as well. So we're doing a lot of work right now at school-based recruitment efforts. Um, when schools are able and the schools know how many uh, sections that they've been allocated to their summer program. So they're uh, already. Have begun the hiring process. And once a school is able to fill with their base school staff, all the positions that they have. If there are additional staff members who would like to participate in summer programs. Uh, we're putting those folks into a central hiring pool to support schools that might be short on staffing. Uh, additionally, uh, as I mentioned, the compensation incentives. We are hoping to be able to publicize that information uh, very soon about the uh, additional pay rates that we think. Uh, hopefully will provide uh, some additional incentives for staff members. And we are working uh, to really track school by school, the hiring progress that schools are making. So schools that are having a hard time uh, rooting staff members from within their own school. Uh, HR and the region offices will be working to support them in the recruiting process. Um, and helping them through that hiring process in any way possible. If we could go to the next slide, please. So at this point, uh, we'd like to turn it back over to Dr. Brabran, who will share some information about what we're planning for uh, fall school year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Thanks, Dr. Presidio. And listen, I just wanna say, uh, Dr. Presidio and his team, amazing job to deliver so much robust summer programming. In-person programming, ten times the scale. It's really a Herculean effort that we've done, not just this year. But also as we prepare for the summer to really help finish some of that unfinished learning. Um, if we could stay on the prior slide, please, for just a moment, if we can go back to slide here, thank you. I wanna just mention as we look to the fall, we will be back five in the fall, five days of in-person instruction. You know, throughout the pandemic, we've been guided knowing that in-person learning is the best for all students. We've said that all along. And we know that the impacts of this pandemic have disproportionately impacted our communities. We do know again, the in-person instruction is what's best. Our own ORC team has finished uh, recent data. Showing that ninety-one percent of families and eighty-eight percent of staff saying they were satisfied with in-person instruction. And so while a return to five days of in-person learning will be welcomed this fall, we know that for some families, there are some concerns that will remain. FCPS and I pledge today that we are gonna work with every family by name and by need. With every family directly. In our community to ensure that they are confident. And returning their children into our school buildings this fall. Our approach has always been through the pandemic to follow the federal, state and local health guidance to navigate our approach. And we'll continue to rely on our health partners to help us keep our schools safe. Uh, and to make sure that these transmission rates, which remain incredibly low. Will be partnered with our vaccination rates. Which are high and are getting higher and higher as we expand the pool. Dr. Boyd shared with you the fantastic information about sixteen to eighteen-year-olds. And we're getting data hearing already from the CDC director. Hearing from Moderna that the vaccine will be available in just a few more weeks to kids as young as twelve years old. That's all of our middle and high school kids in the next few weeks, all being able to be vaccinated. And we're hoping for even more good news about our kids as young as five years old. In the months ahead, just as school begins. We'll continue to work with our health officials and follow and share with you their health guidance. Um, as we prepare for the fall. We also. Uh, want to go ahead now and talk a little bit more about our fall approach. One reminder is that for the fall. We are offering in-person instruction and we're doing it consistent with both state mandates and our CDC guidelines. Effective July first, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, Senate Bill thirteen oh three does become the law in the Commonwealth of Virginia, requiring each division to offer full-time in-person. Instruction to all enrolled students. It also requires divisions to follow the state mandate while applying the CDC guidance to the maximum extent practicable. Now, I know a key question that members of our board and members of the community have asked. They've asked this spring. Hey, why can't we offer five days of in-person learning now? And one of the major drivers has been. Adherence to those physical distancing guidelines. Throughout the pandemic, we've used the CDC to determine the amount of in-person. Instruction that could occur within the CDC parameters. And that did limit the number of students that could be in buildings during uh, the day at any given time. Starting in July, we are following the state mandate to determine in-person learning parameters and then apply the CDC guidance. Again, to the maximum extent practicable. That means we will have students attending in-person learning five days a week, period. We will then use, we will then apply the CDC guidance wherever feasible. As I previously stated, we anticipate many more changes to health guidance and. Additional great news about vaccination updates for school-aged children in the coming months. This is all positive, positive developments as we plan for five days in the fall. And while the current CDC guidance is not possible to implement in all settings in all of our schools. We are actively working to expand, as we already mentioned, our outdoor footprint. At each of our schools so that we'll be able to apply the CDC guidance to the maximum extent practicable. Especially in periods like for lunch uh, or for some of our classes that are exceptionally large and just really. Struggle with those space constraints inside the building um, as, as we prepare for the fall. One of the things I wanna share with you now as we prepare for the fall is, of course, as I shared with the school board and community last month. We can go to the next slide. The primary instructional model will be in-person learning. We know that in-person learning is the most effective. We all know that. And we must return to in-person learning as we have a moral imperative. To address the disproportionate impacts on student groups, certain student groups that we've already shared with you today, that data. We do know though, that there will be. Some, a very few children who do have a medical need to remain virtual as we return to five days in the fall. We've considered a number of different options for providing full-time virtual learning. That is limited to those students who have that medical need. And we have identified our recommended approach. Um, that approach would be concurrent model. Uh, and there are a number of benefits to the concurrent uh, model of instruction. It complies with the Senate Bill thirteen oh three to maximize in-person learning. It provides access to a range of FCPS courses and programs that are taught by our teachers in FCPS. It maximizes synchronous learning time. It keeps students and staff connected to their base school. We have had a strong legacy in FCPS. Of strong community schools. And I believe as superintendent, we need to keep that legacy alive and that connection. To our base schools alive. And it provides a seamless transition to in-person instruction. We anticipate that there will be students that have this limited medical need to. Uh, have virtual instruction at the start of the year, but may be able, again with concurrent instruction to return. As quickly as the vaccine and health conditions improve for those uh, particular kids. And again, based on the news we're hearing, we could have uh, even more great information to share just as the school year is starting, even. Um, in the days before this fall starts. The concurrent model really gives us flexibility to make that transition from virtual learning in person without delays. Uh, or risk of classes being full when those students, again, this small subset of students would want to return. By contrast, having a standalone virtual model would require uh. Pulling teachers from their base schools to centrally offer courses. Uh, to students from multiple schools, and there may not be space at the school's base school when they would be ready to return. From virtual instruction. Concurrent learning allows FCPS to strike the balance between the student's medical need to remain virtual. But also ensuring the school division's able to deliver a fully operational model that functions smoothly. I recognize and we recognize, we have listened to teachers and parents and principals. And there are concerns about concurrent instruction with the increased workload on teachers in particular. Our goal is to limit the number of teachers teaching concurrently. And for those teachers that would be providing concurrent instruction, we would provide an additional stipend. In recognition of the additional workload that would be required. However, as I said, again, concurrent is our recommended approach. However, I know, as I said, that we have heard and you have heard from teachers and principals and even some in the community about the concurrent model. About the additional workload for teachers, about the split of attention of the teacher for the virtual. Kid and the in-person kid. And so if we can go to the next slide. I do have for the board's review today, an alternative approach. To concurrent instruction, which is the use of Virtual Virginia. Virtual Virginia, as many of you know, is a state-run online program supported with your tax dollars. That provides a full-time virtual option for students. There are some limitations. Uh, to courses and opportunities in Virtual Virginia. But the use of Virtual Virginia would minimize the teacher workload concerns associated with concurrent instruction. It would also alleviate school-based scheduling challenges for serving students who must remain virtual. It would provide the opportunity for virtual teachers to focus only on virtual students. Some of the challenges are around the cost for uh, students at about uh, just under four thousand dollars. There are services in Virtual Virginia that we know won't reach all of our students. And that we would need to still provide even if they enrolled in Virtual Virginia. And the program and course offerings are more limited. Um, there's less synchronous time, and this would be with Virtual Virginia, not FCPS. Teachers and will require a year-long student commitment. However, Virtual Virginia, as I said, does provide a full-time virtual option. It does address those teacher workload concerns. And it does alleviate school-based scheduling challenges. I do want to say, even as we look at the concurrent recommendation or at the use of Virtual Virginia as an alternative. I do want to say that the use of Virtual Virginia does not preclude the use of limited, and here I'm talking about very, very limited. Concurrent sections in FCPS. We still need to leave room as we move forward in our fall planning. To be sure that we uh, are addressing every available situation. And there still may need to be in a very few. Very few cases, if we went with Virtual Virginia, the need for some concurrent sections, but far less, of course. Than having concurrent as our primary model. So this is our al- alternative approach to the concurrent model, which is Virtual Virginia. And it's important. Today, as we uh, finish our presentation in just a few more slides, that we get your feedback on our approach. Um, it's important because we do need to get consensus to move forward, either with the concurrent model of instruction for the fall next year. Or to provide uh, for our families, the opportunity to use Virtual Virginia. Let's go to the next slide. Regardless of the approach that we choose, as I said already, the virtual enrollment parameters will be limited. I shared that with you all over a month ago, and I am reaffirming that approach today. Virtual enrollment will be limited. We will provide only a virtual option for those students. Who are limited to having a documented medical need to remain virtual. Requests for the full-time virtual enrollment will be considered through an application process similar to the homebound education process. Which requires such medical documentation. And families requiring this option for their child will be asked to submit a no-cost application in the month of May. Um, I do wanna note that some elective programs requiring highly specialized equipment. Will not be available to full-time virtual students. These are some CD court, CTE courses such as HVAC, nursing, firefighting, some of the courses actually that we talked to you about in the fall. If the Virtual Virginia alternative is used, there would be even additional limitations to the offerings. This uh, May window really serves and allows us, no matter which alternative we select. To have the time to make sure that we can properly implement. Either the concurrent or the Virtual Virginia option for virtual. If we go with the concurrent option, it allows in this May window, our schools to identify which teachers would be teaching concurrently. And it also helps us to better match those students requiring concurrent learning. With the teachers who've been highly successful in providing it this year. And we did a recent survey with ORC and our teachers' teaching concurrently set at a rate of seventy-five percent, they were satisfied in teaching. Those were lower numbers than teaching uh, in person, uh, but still seventy-five percent is a significant number of teachers. That were satisfied in providing it in that model. If we go with the Virtual Virginia approach for our virtual education for these students, these limited students. It would allow us time to be sure that we're working with Virtual Virginia. And, and processing those applications in a timely manner and getting those enrollment selections to Virtual Virginia as soon as possible. So they are prepared for students this fall. If we can go to the next slide, as we talk about the fall. It's so important for all of you on the school board and in our community to know that we are busy. Not just expanding the capacity for our students here in April. Not just planning for a summer school, ten times the level that we have ever done in FCPS. But we are busy at work preparing for a smooth transition to five days of in-person instruction in the fall. There will be a number of changes to the following school year that are different from this school year. First of all, we will be updating our ba- bell schedules and reverting to pre-pandemic bell schedules. Uh, our, our approach to those bell schedules. They will be much, much closer to bell schedules pre-pandemic. We will be cleaning buses on our morning and evening uh, routes. We will be increasing capacity for learning and lunches through the purchase of additional tents for outdoor classrooms. To support adherence to CDC social distancing guidance, again, to the maximum extent practicable. We'll be piloting screening and diagnostic testing. You heard Dr. Boyd just talk about that. We're gonna pilot it this spring in some of our schools. And that testing can help us minimize interruptions to in-person learning. And continue to follow updates to guidance as vaccine availability and health conditions are updated. Our schools will be developing master schedules for five days a week of in-person instruction. And the Fairfax County Government uh, has confirmed to us. Uh, that when FCPS returns to five days of instruction. SAC will be returning to our schools with its before and after school model. I wanna thank all of the work that we have done in partnering with the county this year around the SRS model. And continue to partnering with them as we reinstate the SAC model for this coming year. We will also be discontinuing the use of classroom monitors as we get ready to comply with the new Virginia law. Our classroom monitors answered our call to support students as they return for in-person learning this year. Many of these classroom monitors uh, have done such outstanding jobs that we're hoping. Uh, that we can commit to getting many of them to find other work opportunities within FCPS. And I want you to know that all of our classroom monitors are already being invited to join our subpool. So that we can expand our substitute pool for next year. And are also being encouraged to apply for other advertised positions. I do believe we will find future teachers among the pool of classroom monitors that we utilize this year. Our employees will also be required to report. In person to perform their essential job duties, which for teachers and instructional assistants includes. Classroom management. As a result, telework will generally not be available in the upcoming school year because classroom management is an essential job function related. To five days of in person instruction. Finally, we will be sunsetting. Covid related leaves of absence. For FCPS regulation forty eight twenty two, covid related LOAs will be limited to the current school year. And will no longer be available in school year twenty one and twenty two. We are ready and excited about a smooth transition to five days in the fall. But we know there's still some work to do to ensure that smooth transition by partnering with our community. Every family by name and by need. As we make this transition to five days in the fall, and I'm so excited. As we continue to lift up our values as an organization. Particularly around caring culture. To bring in Dr. Williams and. Kathleen. To talk about our caring culture as we look at our community. Outreach, so Kathleen Waltz and Lisa Williams will now be sharing with you our approach. Around community outreach for every family by name and by need. Dr. Williams and Ms. Waltz.
Thank you, Dr. Braybrand, I think I'll pick it up from here, and as we plan for the fall, we center. If we could go to the next slide, please. We center a caring culture with community outreach efforts to bring our students back. And considering our audience with current FCPS families who might still be hesitant about returning their students. To in person learning for a variety of reasons. Former FCPS families who continue to reside in Fairfax County and may be ready to return. And prospective families who will need to register in FCPS for the first time. In kindergarten or for our early childhood programs. Our intentions, as Dr. Braybrand has already mentioned, are to build confidence with trust. And. With our community that schools are and will continue to be safe. To build enthusiasm for that safe September in person return. To encourage families to register, especially our kindergarten and pre K families. And to welcome back those who are returning to school buildings for the first time in more than a year. So we have convened a large team, division wide, to include teachers, associations, principals. Executive principals, teachers. And central office leaders to identify our current state. And additional considerations we will make in bringing our students back to FCPS schools. So our current state includes continued engagement with families. Schools and central office staff have made great strides in communicating and reaching out to families. And some of those strategies include school staff conducting home visits. Parent liaisons contacting families and assisting with a variety of resources. School registrars calling individual families. Partnering with faith based organizations. Utilizing many multilingual communication tools. Our town halls. Multilingual podcasts to include Spanish, Korean and Arabic families. Social workers supporting outreach and communication with families. And following up with families who are no longer enrolled in our schools. Our campaign to return students to FCPS includes. The launch of this campaign at the division level for a safe return to five day in person instructional model in August. Knowing there's, there may still be some hesitancy on the part of some families. But our schools are and will continue to be safe for our students and our families. We will help our families to have the confidence to return their children to our schools. We will continue to get the word out that it is time for our families and students to come home to FCPS. We are ready, willing and able to support our students in returning to school. For five full days of instruction beginning August twenty twenty one. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Waltz, and let's finish up our presentation with another just brief video about why we're all here. Well, I I thought that's a great way to wrap up, you saw a lot of thumbs up there in that last video, it's really been a promising spring. As we've expanded access for students. It is a promising summer as we create a summer program at ten times the scale before. To help our students finish the unfinished learning that has taken place this year. And it is truly an exciting fall. As we prepare. To bring back all of our students for five days of in person instruction. We know there's work to do and communication with all of our families and children. We know there's more information that will be coming out from our health and medical authorities and additional great vaccination news. And we are excited to return FCPS. Back to normal, back to near normal instruction. In the twenty one twenty two school year. We're so excited and we'll be glad to take any questions that you may have today. Just as a reminder, again, of all the things that we've shared, I will be looking. For some board feedback and and hopefully some consensus. As we move forward. For those limited number of students that will require. Based on medical need, a virtual approach, whether concurrent. Or going to Virtual Virginia would be the recommended approach, I've recommended concurrent, but I have provided Virtual Virginia as an alternative. And I would like some of the board discussion later this afternoon to help provide some consensus for me as I move forward. Thank you all so much, and we'll be glad to take questions now or after the break as the board directs.
Thank you very much, I am going to ask for everybody's flexibility here, we were going to do a one to one thirty, we're now at one thirteen. My proposal would be that we start again at one forty five, I know that we have got some members. Who have. Outstanding things that they've got to sort of come in and out for, so we're going to do our best to accommodate that. If you've reached out to me to let me know about those, I've bumped you up on the list. I have currently written down everybody's names as they appeared to me with the hands up. So with your permission, what I'd like to do is have us go ahead and take our thirty minute lunch break. And then we will go back and, as I said, we'll, we'll make sure that everybody gets a chance in between the other, other meetings and things that we have scheduled today. All right, here, here. No problem, we'll see you guys, everybody back at one forty five.
Thank you, Ms. Cohen.